Jeff Redman and Kirk are not with us tonight, so.
Neither one of them is on.
Not.
Virtual either?
No, they will not be with us, they've notified me of that. Okay. This point, uh, was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was.
And we are doing an audio and video recording of this meeting.
Yes, I'm recording now.
Okay.
Are you doing the, should I do the virtual as well, doing the in-house? Um, Pam, would you please record it since I can't have mine on, on your, be the bottom right on your meeting? Be those three little dots. Record meeting.
Okay, uh, with that, we will continue on the meeting. This point, do we have anybody online or, uh, in the crowd here with public comment?
No.
Does anybody have any public comment at this time?
Did you get it Pam?
I'm trying to.
Okay, um. Okay, with, with no public comment available at this time, uh, we'll move on. Our highlight on youth, I don't believe we have a highlight on youth, uh, this month.
Nope.
So we will move on to the next item, which is comments from our board members and superintendent. We'll start it off with Tim.
Yeah, one of the first things I had was just to follow up that Joe Donovan, a couple of documents that I forwarded this morning after, um, having a conversation with him. Based on the last, uh, meeting with him, I think it was Jeff Redman brought up, you know, about the task force, we called it an ad hoc committee last time. But if we're gonna form a task force and, and, uh, get, uh, input from anyone in the community, form a committee. So Joe had developed an outline for that and sent it in a memo, tweaked a little bit. One thing we talked about, if you look at in, uh, meeting one, for instance, item B talks about an architect. So I said, well, we, you know, at what point, you know, should we be just interviewing or talking to architects and/or construction managers? Or the, um, firms that do both? At some point, we're gonna need, you know, kind of, uh, rough estimates on numbers for what the committee comes up with. So it's something I just wanted to bring up that at what point would, would you like me to reach out and ask people? And, uh, what kind of process do you want in trying to select an architect and, and when, et cetera? Architects slash construction managers slash, you know, ones that do it both. Cause at some point, after what the committee comes up with, need to cost it out. Joe would be facilitating all the meetings and the discussions, et cetera, as you can see. But that was one question I had for the board as well.
Is there anything else? I think, I think at this point, you know, I would go through our strategic, uh, planning session in July. See what we come with out of there, uh, before we decide on if and when we wanna move forward or something like that.
Okay.
If that's agreeable to us, the board members.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, the first task force meeting would be September slash October. And then it would be, you know, probably two or three meetings before we would even need to start costing. And then, so that puts us in a November-ish, uh, where we actually be meeting now, but we probably wanna solicit them a few months in advance. Or so we could kinda get ready and do some background work. And then, um, the other thing with that conversation with Joe is that, uh, you know, he, his company does the surveys as well. You know, school perceptions does that, we used Morris Leatherman last time. So again, he's kind of a, he does it all. So, um, he sent some samples that I included in that email, as well as some surveys, um, with some school districts he's worked with and/or his working.
And I think that was part of the reason we chose him, because he did all of it himself instead of.
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything else, Tim?
Yeah, uh, secondly, just wanna give you an update on the, uh, Washington DC trip. As I'm sure you know, uh, this one had to be postponed and, uh, something pretty special. Uh, I think our, our students remember for a lifetime and want to still provide that opportunity. So Luke Fritchy and Pat Hook and I think a group of eighth grade staff that typically go, um, you know, saw an obstacle or a roadblock and try to look for a way around it. So we brainstormed quite a while ago now, a couple of months ago probably. He asked for permission to try and proceed and, and plan two for next year with next year's freshmen and of course, the current eighth graders. So that this year's eighth grade would not miss out, they just would have to go next year, wait a year or so. He's made that happen, he's got it booked, um, next year, May twenty-third to twenty-eighth is the eighth graders. And then in June, uh, they take next year's ninth graders, this year's eighth graders, June twentieth to twenty-fifth. They also would get Chris Buckland involved, Chris would be a high school teacher that, you know, worked with them, uh, taught them all year too. And then, um, we talked about an additional stipend for those teachers that have to go in June, be under a contract of a thousand dollars to cover those six days. So, um, worked that into the budget with Jen and, and gonna make it happen. So I just, uh, wanted to notify you of that and commend the staff on finding a way to make that happen for our kids. And then lastly, the, uh, last thing I had was, um, I shared that, uh, parent survey, uh, that the school reopening committee, um, had sent down, looked at. We've met up for the third time, I think this was the third Monday now we've met, get a lot of things done, kids cares ready to roll. Staff did try this job of coming up with a document, every detail, it's worked out and communicated and they're in the middle of, um, enrolling for tier one parents, tier one employees. And then, uh, weight room, we're, we're, uh, pretty much done with the final, um, plan as well. The county gave us the go-ahead to increase it to groups of fifteen today from ten. So we're gonna plan on groups of fifteen to, to one, um, again, uh, cohorts, keeping kids together, um, not just on Monday, but every day. If you sign up for a certain slot, you're gonna be with that group of kids all week, each week hopefully. And if you can't make it, somebody else doesn't come in and replace you, we just go a little short. Um, so that, uh, sign up and survey is going out any day now as well for the middle school and high school. Right now, the high school's planned on six sessions and the middle school, three.
Middle school came out today.
Yeah, we got middle school today.
Okay, good. And then, um, there's some dialogue, um, asked about a staff survey, so I just wanted to get a little input. The committee brainstormed what's questions and what information we want from the, the staff. The first one would be to your kind of point about, um, are you comfortable coming back? If not, why, what are some barriers? Now, there's, we, through HR, we know which employees from back in, uh, March had underlying health conditions or, or family members in the house that do. You know, we know there's, there's that potential barrier with, with people individually. We obviously don't wanna ask that specifically in the survey, we have that information anyway. But, um, what would make you more comfortable coming back? You know, like what, uh, PPE practices and such could we have in place? Uh, another thing is, uh, internet connection, wanna, we think we know some that were having to come into school during this closure and, and, but we weren't sure if it was for internet or if it was just to have a quiet space to work. Um, so we'd like to find out about internet connections, see if that's a barrier, whether it's great, effective, poor, or not at all. Cause we have hotspots for kids that don't have, we have thirty down, but those would go to kids, back to kids in the fall. So we would need to know perhaps how to problem solve for staff if they have to work for those. And then, um, an open-ended question, what other information would you like for the, the planning maybe, uh, committee to consider? Kind of an open-ended question, those are the five that we came up with, are there any other ones that you could think of?
That's to all staff.
Yes. We have a plan, HR, uh, working on a document, a plan for staff that, you know, can't, uh, work, um, or aren't comfortable. You know, there's varying degrees, but, um, the, uh, through kid, the CARES Act, Emergency Sick Leave Act, uh, we, we can provide, um, two weeks, ten days of paid sick leave. Then, then after that, they have to use their own bank of leave. And after that, if they're still, uh, not comfortable or unable to, uh, currently, the plan is, um, allow up to a one-year leave of absence unpaid.
I guess I would suggest that we break it out into subsets for them if it's a person who does multiple roles. I would be comfortable teaching, not coaching, I would be comfortable not with my such-and-such group. You know, so are, beyond your primary job, are there any secondary jobs that would cause you concern? I.e. coaching, mentoring, whatever, you know, I, I think they might be two separate issues for people.
Right, like lunch supervision and, and that.
Or coaching in a wrestling room versus teaching in a classroom. I mean, they're, they're, they're not the same animal to me.
Nope, you're gonna get more.
Yeah, I was trying to think of a way to ask, you know, there may be, ultimately, the plan is you, um, you may not be able to do your job, right? Let's say it's a, a job, I don't know, that specials, right? Where you're seeing a hundred fifty, two hundred kids a day perhaps, touching the same objects and maybe it's just not feasible. I don't know, way to ask that, like.
Do you see any barriers to your job that, you know, i.e., um, shared equipment, touching, those sorts of things? And if your job wasn't able to be done this year, would you be in, willing to do something else within the district? Maybe, I don't know.
You don't ask them.
If you can't have music, but you need the person.
Yeah.
You know? I, I don't know what that looks like, but.
You wanna ask them if they have a suggestion? Instead of just, uh, issues, like do they have a workaround or an idea of a different way to approach it?
Yeah, cause I was thinking like art supplies, there could be a workaround.
Yeah, I would say for sure that there's a, uh, or even if you end it with, if you have other input or workaround or, or whatever to, to these barriers. Let's have an in-person meeting, you know?
Oh.
Because the survey is pretty impersonal for the music teacher to come, that, they can't answer the question that you're asking vaguely. But if they stood in front of you in the music room, they could say, here's what we're going to do.
Yeah.
You know? So I think we need to get personal after the survey, you know? If, if there's deeper conversations, we should have that, no.
I know some are already actually happening like that.
Yeah, I'm sure they are, and I didn't mean to imply that they weren't, but.
Yeah, yep.
If our, if eight bus drivers aren't comfortable driving a bus, we need plan B.
Yeah. And speaking of which, that's right now, our, you know, our biggest concern that we don't have a real great answer for, other than asking, you know, those parents if they're able to carpool or other, provide transportation, that's the greatest, I mean, if we're, we're still, um, recommended to have small groups. I mean, putting seventy kids on a bus for an hour is.
Yep.
Not good practice, so, um, we're looking at everything, but we quickly learned double routing, it's almost a half a million dollars, like we have to do it all year, every route.
Right.
So.
And communicating the transportation issue is. As normal is insurmountable, so we need the parents to help us figure out the solution to that.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else that's up here? Okay, is there any other comments from any other board members or?
Just, just on that, that might be one to ask corporations if they'd be willing to step up and help fund something. Because if you had to have people drop people off at work and you get larger companies, and there are people, big folks can't come in, they have to drop off at eight and show, leave by two-thirty. They might be willing to help fund.
With transportation.
Transportation might be less costly than not having people at work.
And we might wanna leverage some parents to come up with a shareable document of some sort too. I can drive.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's gonna take, it's gonna take some.
Carpool.
Community creativity beyond your close friend group.
And their Uber's.
Cause it's, yeah, that just, the group size is one thing and it's the first contact of the day. I mean, they're, they're all put together right away, then all the other mitigation practices are.
Yeah.
It's just.
And you can't take temperature because you're standing outside.
Yep, right.
So if that's not, that's not, you know, to do that to mitigate, that's irrelevant.
Yep, and that crosses the most grade levels and, you know, I mean, it's, it's not most of your eighth graders were together with eighth graders. It's everybody, and then narrow and then wide again.
Again, the close contact rule, if, if student A gets it and they're with, you know, twenty kids, I mean, even that's a huge deal. But it's sixty of the kids that they may have gotten. You know, it's, then they're required to be home for two weeks and it's a real quick snowball effect.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, I don't believe we have any scheduled presentations at this time. So we will move into our financial reports.
Bank account balances as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty, citizens state checking, nine hundred, three thousand, five hundred, twenty-six dollars, eleven cents. Citizens money market, twelve thousand, two hundred, fifty-three dollars, ninety-five cents. Citizens money market fund, forty-six, fifty-two dollars, ninety-eight cents. Citizens money market suicide prevention fund, nineteen thousand, one hundred, forty-eight dollars, twenty-five cents. For total bank account balances of nine hundred, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred, eighty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Who to accept is presented.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Motion David, second, Tricia, to accept the treasurer's report is presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which consists of our May fourth board learning, uh, meeting minutes. Our teacher meet and confer meeting minutes of May eleventh. Our support staff meet and confer meeting of May fourteenth. Our SEC, uh, school board meeting of May eighteenth. Approval of the bi-monthly bills for the June twenty-twenty. Approval of resignations and retirements of Brianna Lindahl as our assistant cheerleading coach. Vicky, uh, Burkeins is our head cheerleading coach. And I have another resignation here of Angie, Angie Brown. Who is our, uh, you know, one of our part-time elementary school counselors. We have approval of appointments and contract modifications of Brianna Lindahl will be our head cheerleading coach. Vicky Burkeins will be the assistant cheerleading coach. Samantha Bart, Martell will be our full-time FBLA coordinator. Also approval of the sixty-six, three oh one agreement with, for intellectual disabilities programming with Baldwinwoodville School District. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Who to accept is presented, with your addition.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, David, second, Tricia, to accept the, uh, consent agenda with the one addition. Yes, as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Pass these around, we've got a big pack of bills to sign. Triple A will take us all the way back into almost March, so. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item. Administrative reports, uh, we'll start with our student enrollment update. This, uh, the item eleven A.
Alright, the last day of school, uh, students in seats totaled one thousand, five hundred, ninety-nine. We started out September third, Friday counted, one thousand, six oh eight. We're down nine students throughout the year. And, uh, for our open enrolled in versus out, you can see there on the bottom left, three hundred and eleven of our students are open enrolled in. One oh seven out, the difference of two oh four. The bottom right-hand corner, um, our virtual charter school, uh, was at two oh two, uh, when tallied this, this month. And we have one oh nine of our students open enrolled in, in seats to get to that three eleven number. So two hundred and two of our three hundred and eleven open enrolled in our, in our virtual charter school. And, um, lastly, a free reduced lunch rate there in the middle, on the right, uh, ended at twenty-two point six seven percent of our students on free. And reduced lunch, total of three hundred and ninety-two students.
Did that change because of the lunch program or was that this, that, that is what it always was as far as paperwork?
Yeah, that, that didn't change anything, the, the meal delivery program was eligible, every student was eligible for it, it would be free, yeah.
I think the numbers are up a little bit, but I think it's part of a, part of the, uh, just the economic situation right now.
Yeah, we've statistically been around twenty percent, you know, for the last seven years.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the student enrollment? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the next one. Item is an update on our high school academic performance. Turn over to you, Kirk.
Thank you. Take the mask off so you can hear me. Just have a quick handout here. You've seen these before, but I wanted to have it in front of you so that we can talk about it. You have a good reminder. Well, thank you for, um, letting me be here tonight to share a couple of things that I just wanna give an update on. Typically, this time every year, I try to, in June or July, give an update about the academic, uh, progress at the high school, kinda some, some information. So I'm looking forward to that tonight. So I gave you our ten grading practices because at the end I wanna speak about, um, some analysis that I did on traditional grading compared to standard-based grading and I refer to this. So I wanted to make sure that you had it in front of you, so. Just starting with some ACT results, the hope was to be able to get into the ACT portal before tonight, um, but they're having some issues, so we weren't able to. But this is the information I was able to glean so far. So ACT results for the class of twenty twenty-one, our five-year average composite is a twenty-one point two. So all the scores together in a composite, our average is twenty-one point two, the highest being the class of twenty nineteen of twenty-one point eight. That typically puts us into the top one or two in our conference. This year, we had a projected composite score in the fall for the class of twenty twenty-one of twenty point three. So we took the pre-ACT in the fall and then our teachers used that information to drive some, um, interventions and so on. And so we ended up with the actual composite score in the spring of twenty-one point one, which on the ACT is a significant jump. So we're very proud of our class of twenty twenty-one and the staff for their work on ACT. I did wanna point out that typically, we look at how many students achieve a thirty or more, which is, you could add both of my ACT scores together, still not get a thirty. But those are kids that really have it together and we had twelve students in that category. And typically, twenty-six is kinda the marker for, you know, you're getting into your higher-end four-year schools. Uh, we had sixteen students in the twenty-six to twenty-nine range, uh, which means together, we had twenty-seven percent of our class of twenty twenty-one and the twenty-six or better. Very solid, um, in terms of this whole class. Um, I did not compare this to previous classes, this is the first time I've done that part of it. So I will work on gathering that data and get that back to you, um, when I come in with our AP results, I can have that information for you. So overall, very good, uh, report and a great job done by our class of twenty twenty-one and our staff as well. If you have any questions, just feel free to throw them out there. Uh, we have a program, I think everyone here is familiar with it, but it's a partnership with UW Oshkosh, it's called CAP, stands for Cooperative Academic Partnership Program. Uh, this year, we had Math one oh eight, pre-calculus, taught by, um, Mr. Kimberly. And we had twenty students who took that class and passed it, and earned five college credits. So we had one hundred credits earned in that class. Uh, students pay a third of the cost that it would regularly be, so it's typically, um, quite a great savings for them. Also UW Oshkosh and other state schools now are starting this, but UW Oshkosh is our partner. Uh, they're very generous in that if a student is on free and reduced lunch, they get, uh, even less of a cost to them. So it's fifty dollars a credit for that student rather than one hundred dollars a credit. English one oh one, taught by Mr. Jordine's, uh, college writing, they had thirty students, uh, pass that course for three credits. And so they earned, earned a hundred and fourteen credits, uh, through that course as well. So this year, two hundred and fourteen credits, um, earned through our UW partnership with, uh, with UW Oshkosh. Uh, and one of the reasons we got involved in UW Oshkosh CAP programs, because the number of student, of, uh, colleges, universities that accept those credits. Um, private colleges from all over the country, public colleges from all over the country, and that list just continues to grow. So it's been a great partnership. Uh, one of the advantages of CAP is that it allows students that they, they pay for that class upfront, their portion of it. And we, if they pass the class, they're guaranteed the credit, as opposed to in, um, an AP course. You have to pass the test at a three or better to get college credit. So there's more risk there for those students.
They also help with, um, transfer and, and working with transcripts and stuff too. I've read that in the CAP program.
Yes, exactly. Oshkosh has been a great partnership. So the, um, they, they hit to AP, we've always been very strong in AP, we still are very strong in AP, we continue to, to work in that direction. But this gives families an option, um, to get more of a guaranteed credit as opposed to taking that risk. Either way, great options and giving, uh, students and families options is what we're about, so. I'm very excited to announce that for the next school year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we will add communication one eleven, that's the fundamentals of speech. Uh, Mrs. Jordine's will teach that, I don't know if any of you remember your speech class at college, I do. It's frightening, and so we're gonna, they can use that in front of them to go to college. And then Math one seventy-one calculus, will be taught by Mr. Kimberly. So we're very excited about our partnership with CAP and, um, look to continue to grow that as well, as well as our AP side.
Are these only offered to, like fundamentals of speech and English, are those only offered to seniors?
Right now, because, uh, we had four years required sign, uh, ELA classes, that is an elective that they can take as a senior or junior. We tried to start it as a sophomore, there was so much interest in the senior class that we, that we really booked it all with incoming seniors. Great question.
Kirk, I missed it, who is going to be teaching the calculus?
Uh, Mr. Kimberly. Uh, other areas, we had nine students complete our construction academy and earned credentials through WITC, that's through Mr., um, uh, Mr. Wenzel's, head that up. We had thirty-six students complete four hundred and fifty hours minimum in their youth apprenticeship program, their work experience program. Very impressive, I'm looking forward to having Mrs. Crowley come in and talk to you about the great job that she's done, uh, with that program, really growing it. And, um, students wanna work and now they have some, an additional reason to do that and do it well. So thank you to her. Uh, there's two different programs, Start College Now is the two-year version of getting your early college credits, early college credits in the UW system. So we had nineteen students that completed credits at CBTC and WITC, and that's nineteen students. Uh, many of them completed multiple classes in, in those programs. So one of the things I wanna do is dig deeper and see just how many credits that was, how many courses that, that was. And then in addition to the, to our CAP program, also early college credit, we had three students complete courses through UW system. One was online and then two other courses through UW in the fall, so. Very active, um, when people wonder why students are coming and going, sometimes this is, this is the reason. So we're very excited about that. So we're very excited about that and very proud of our students. Advanced placement results will be out July fifteenth, so giving them a buffer of probably a week sometime in, uh, early August. I'll probably be back with AP results for you and share those with you. So moving on, I had a chance to do a research, uh, project and I thought it'd be a great idea to look at the impact of standard-based grading on student achievement as related to letter grades. And so I'm here just to show you that briefly, the results. So the research question really was, um, what impact does standard-based grading have on student achievement as expressed in letter grades? Um, and particularly at the secondary level. Uh, secondary level, uh, high school, we are kind of the first ones through the wall in, in our area. Lots of schools are doing it, especially in Iowa, but, um, we want some data, we want to know what's happening, if it's working or not. So we, I tackled this project. So here, you're looking at standard-based grading methods, um, things like teaching to the four, high, high number of formative assessments, uh, retake, retakes, reassessments, and then our ten grading practices, which are the absolute backbone of what we do in terms of grading. Uh, the ten grading practices, as I have told our staff, we can have conversations about these concepts. But this is not a discussion, we can have a discussion over this, not going to change. These are what, these are the things that we do in terms of grading. And we do them because, just as it says at the top of that page, they're fair and accurate. Um, these aren't things that we've made up or conjured up, these are things that are, that are proven to work and so we're, um, we're committed to those things. So every student that walks into the high school, their family can rest assured that those ten things are going to be followed, and if they're not, I want to know about. So I combine those two things together because they're almost inseparable. You know, the, the standard-based grading practices and our ten grading practices are really closely tied, so I thought it's important to have those both in there. So some general information, we used the twenty seventeen eighteen, starting with that, those letter grade, um, years, seventeen eighteen. And then through first semester, it was going to be the full year, but obviously we had issue with COVID. So through the first semester this year, I looked at the individual grades for traditional and individual grades for standards-based classes. So we, I use the nine through twelfth grade ELA math and science only. The reason I did that is because those are the only courses that are required for everyone. So you get a good look at freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Student demographics you're aware of, but generally will be between four thirty-five and four hundred and fifty students, approximately fifteen percent special education, approximately sixty students with, um, with IEP, with a five oh four plans. Those are proximus because they're different years, so rather than split them off by year, I just, for this presentation, I gave the proximities. Okay, so hopefully it gives you a clear picture of what data I'm looking at. So in that timeframe, we had three thousand four hundred and fifty-two individual grades assigned in a traditional model. We had two thousand two hundred and fourteen individual grades assigned in the, uh, standard-based model. Um, when I looked at those and compared them, some things have known. A grades increased by nine point three seven percent. Now, when you first look at that, you might say, well, that's just grade inflation, you're just giving kids grades. I would argue very confidently that it is not grade inflation and we're actually drilling into what kids truly know. The formative checks, as I mentioned, summatives and reassessments, retakes, trying to individualize that program for the student and what they need, I think is really driven us. The, the simple philosophy is we're going to teach to the four, to the highest level we can and drive everybody up. I think this is an indication of that. Ds and, DNF grades decreased by five point three three percent and Is or incompletes, um, increased by three point one five. And that's a positive and I'll explain why. So incomplete, if a student gets an incomplete, that just means they're not there yet. At the high school, we run into that problem, end of the semester, we have to have a grade, it goes in the GPA, it goes in a transcript. But if we do an incomplete, that gives us more time to work with that student. Um, and so we like to see those incompletes go up, not in a crazy fashion, we want them to, to go up and Fs and Ds go down, um, which means we're not done yet with that student. So I ran a statistical analysis and I used, um, Analysis of Variance, which is called ANOVA, that's one tool that we could use, that's what I chose to use. We can set a significance level. So if the alpha level that I said is at point oh five, whenever the P value comes back is when the, when the analysis is done. If it's below point oh five, that means it's highly significant. Um, and so the results for us in our P value, when we looked at all those and plugged it into the Analysis of Variance, came back at point zero zero five seven. It's significantly below point zero five. Okay, what does that mean? That means that the results are statistically significant. That means that we have a high confidence that what we're doing in standard-based grading practices and our ten grading practices are improving student achievement. Here's a graphic, uh, that I'd like to walk through. And this says the same thing that I just told you, but it's a lot, a lot more exciting to look at. Um, so you'll note that the blue line are the traditional, uh, traditional tracking grades and those runs A all the way over incomplete. If I could do this research again, I would, I would segregate the Ds and Fs, but they're lumped together and I'll explain that in a minute. Standard-based grades are in red and the difference between the two is in yellow. So here you know that in a traditional, the traditional grades, those three thousand that we charted, forty-four point seven nine percent were As. And when we went to standard-based, fifty-four point one six percent were As, that's an increase or difference of nine point three seven percent. If you go back a couple of years, you know, Tim will remember it well, I think Howard was in the crowd. One of the major concerns with that, kids were gonna, their grades were gonna drop. And we're finding that that's not actually happening. What's actually happening is their As are increasing. Our Bs show a nominal increase at five point two two percent. Our Cs have dropped by twelve point four two percent, which, when you look at the rest of the Ds and Fs and the complete, means they've been, those kids have been driven towards the Bs and the As. So when you're looking at, we want to teach to the four or teach to the A, we are trying to drive kids up. I believe this data shows that and we're driving them up, uh, because we're pulling kids out of the Cs, Ds, and we're moving them up. So I, I find that to be very exciting. Um, and then in the Ds and Fs, you'll note that the traditional is five point seven four percent and the difference was only five point three three percent. But if you just look at the difference, it doesn't look like, well, that's not a very big difference. But look at the percent of Ds and Fs assigned in a standard-based grading, wow, point four one percent. It's tiny. And the reason is because we're driving kids up and we're not done with them yet. So you'll note that our incompletes have increased. And actually, the, uh, standard-based grading here in red for incompletes is at four point one one percent. And the traditional incompletes is at point nine percent. It's an almost exact flip, an exact mirror, the Ds and the incompletes, which tells us that we're moving in the right direction. So in summary, what I see when I read that is that we're moving kids from Cs to Bs and As, they're moving up to the fours where we want them. Um, we're doing it with fair and accurate grading and we're giving kids a chance to learn it in their time. And we're not, this isn't a free-for-all, this isn't just handing out grades. Well, we're giving kids a chance to that incomplete, to come back and learn it and learn it the best that they possibly can. Um, so the really great news is, based on this study, ninety-nine point four four percent confidence that standard-based grading is improving student achievement at St. Croix Central High School.
So is it, is it improving student achievement or is your P value based on the grade, the percentile change inside of the grade?
Yeah, the, the P value, the P value indicates that it, that the percentage change is an indicator that it's significant, has a significant impact on the performance.
Percentage change means it's a significant impact on the percentage of people in that category?
Right, so, I'm sorry, so when you go back to the raw, the data that was, the percentage is another slice of the data, but the raw data that we plugged in came back with that P value. So the P value is associated with the raw data. Well, like the number, that, that raw number.
Like the number of As and the number?
This, the percentage, I thought was easy to see the difference. Great question.
No, I, I mean, I, we use them all the time, so just.
Excellent, next time I do one, you're my partner.
My question is on the, like, so you're comparing last, is it last year when they didn't have standard-based grades to this year when you did? Is, that's the comparison?
So seventeen eighteen, we took those, those grades for ELA math and science, nobody was standard-based. And then we took, um, some of that pilot year, the following year. So some of the ELA classes are standard-based, some of the math. All of math was that in that pilot year. So there was some, you know, some of that. That's where, I could have gone back earlier, but I thought that was enough data to get us there.
I'm just wondering if it's like same student to same student comparisons.
In, in places, it certainly is. Because if, if you're taking the only class that isn't standard-based and you're taking the math class that is.
Okay, and then the, uh, F rating was, what, the minimum, still fifty percent rather than zero?
Well, in this case, an F would, would indicate as a one for us in the standard-based model. We didn't have a zero last year. We had, ours were one, two, three, four. And now this coming in, I'm going to throw a zero in there as well.
And it's based on like levels of knowledge? I know, like, the math stuff, I would help my son with that, and it's based on levels of knowledge. So it's like, you know, if you can do this hard one, which incorporates all the stuff below it, then you're getting a four, but otherwise. Yeah, so it's not, yeah, it's not percentage complete of a test or percentage right, it's levels of.
That's the big mind shift. It's not eighty-seven percent, fifty percent, it's, it's a
Do you know what you're supposed to do?
Degree of quality from high to low.
Would you say it's based on those levels of knowledge, like for application?
Yeah, roughly it is. So roughly, it's based on groups types of.
That's the one.
So moving forward, what are the conclusions, what does this mean in my mind? Uh, again, there's lots to look at, but, uh, one, standard-based grading is having a positive impact on student performance. The ten grading practices are essential to fair and accurate grading. Standard-based grading and ten practices are our best practice in teaching. Gives the kids the best opportunity to, to be successful. Um, and then I think maintaining our practices is what's best for students, so we'll continue to, to work on those things. What's next? There's some things I want to look at. Uh, first to look at efficacy, self-efficacy of the student. Does this impact their own psyche and I can do this? I know what I see in my own home, I know what I see in the hallways, I know what I see in one-on-one conversation with kids, but I want to get some data that, that they give us feedback. And does this make you feel like you can accomplish it, that you're not done yet? Um, and then on, on teachers, there's a teacher collective efficacy. Can we help students grow? What is the impact of this and these grading practices on that? Um, and then what are these practices doing on standardized tests? Uh, we saw a nice jump with our kids this year, uh, from their, their fall to their spring. I don't know if that means anything, I don't know if it's related at all to standard-based grading. So that's going to take some time and some years to look at. Um, and then the biggest one, which I probably would be my first thing I would look at next is, what impact does it have on our exceptional learners? Our kids with IEPs, our kids with five oh fours. Because if we can bring all students along, uh, we talk oftentimes, we're closing the gap with our, with our exceptional learners. Um, if this is the ticket to do that, man, what a great trip to be on. So in summary, I just, I think we're doing the right work, I, I think we're doing it the right way and I think we're doing it for the right reasons. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to.
Could you, um, get the data on those students that are not done yet, that you're reevaluating or reworking? Um, because I mean, typically you think about what used to be, like you get a D or an F and you get a D or an F, that's it, you're done. Now you're re-teaching, right? So then where do they sort of fall?
Where the eyes are.
Great.
I, I, I think the, the thing that was like, the, the numbers that jumped out at me is kind of that overlay that you're talking about on the future of overlaying this across the projected scores versus the actual ice scores based on what you've done during the year. And then if you could look historically, which is harder, I get that, but what were those projections versus where you ended up? So is this more efficient at driving those scores just because that ECD is a little more standardized? Um, but that makes, for regular people, it's probably a little easier to understand that a P value, because a P value, depending on what you use as your alpha, that's going to be, there's a, depending on how significant that is, people are going to struggle with, like, what does that really mean generally? Like, we generally won't present that because people.
Yeah, well, and I'm, I'll tell you, when I sat on my couch waiting to calm your time down with my concerns, can I explain that in a way that makes sense?
I teach statistics, I don't teach P values.
So Ryan, going back to your first point, just so I, I want to take every good idea I can. So look at the historical projections from fall, pre-ACT to how they did.
I, I just, I think, I think that's probably going to tell your story or maybe could tell the story better for people to understand is that, what were those projections previously? And then where did we end up versus this year? Because it looks like a really good story, like moving a point-ish is huge. Um, on an ACT, right? Generally, you have to take it a second time to move a point, right, so you understand the testing and then review it, so.
Well, and then you have to back, did Brian give great effort before, or did he dog it and then in spring, you look like, you don't understand.
Or did he play baseball pretty far the night before and get twelve thirty A on the night prior?
I think he looked the same way. That was a legit doubleheader.
Yeah.
Need us to arm and reverse with people, you know?
Well, I appreciate your time, if there's any other questions, I certainly will stay here.
I've got a, I've got a couple of oddball questions for, for kind of off the, uh, subject matter here. But do we have any feeling as to how successful our online learning was for the last quarter of the year for our students?
Well, I had heard.
Face-to-face? And I guess the second question I would have is, uh, have we awarded, uh, in some way, shape, or form, that diplomas to our students that have been signed or are we still waiting for our graduations early?
Great, uh, so the success or lack thereof online, I think we, um, the best indicator is I sat with every PLC, so by departments. And they had the task of filling out a form that talked about what kids were struggling and what they needed yet. Um, and then their recommendation that they needed to retake the class or they needed to, um, complete certain work, whatever that might be. And, um, I don't have the exact numbers yet, but the numbers are far fewer than what I thought it was going to be, which may be a good indication. I think some kids, some students who struggled in school loved it at home. I know there's some parents in this room that had kids that really loved it and there's some parents in this room that had kids that didn't like it. I would say that overall, based on the assessment that we went through, the audit panel with our each department, I would say we're in good shape. I don't want to do it again. Um, I think, I think we're wearing people thin. And there's this constant stress of I'm missing somebody or something because I don't get to see Brian or Tim or Howard in my classroom. I have to hope they're okay and try to connect and, and so on. So I think, I think, um, that I'm not answering your question with any kind of data because I don't have it, but just my feel from seeing those reports come back is that many of our kids did everything they had to do to get, to get it done and get it done well.
The only reason I ask is some of the survey data that I've, I've seen, that's a major concern, some of the parents, that their students are falling behind. And they are stressed because, uh, they're having to service teachers and they don't feel they're serving as an adequate teacher.
State-wide or nationwide surveys?
I, I think it's what I've seen, uh, from our old students and parents, and talking to some of the parents.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. And just, I think it's important that, that those folks know and I've had a couple of individual conversations where I've called students from my office because mom and dad said we're really stressing, just, we are prepared for it. The teachers know, for example, um, I'm teaching English nine and then the students go to English ten. That English ten and nine teacher, they spoke and they know what they need to roll back and hit standards again. Um, so we're prepared for that. Uh, I think there are certain students that we, it's going to be important as we start to plan to reopen, that we have kids back that need that extra help, I mean, whether it be end of August or whatever. But I think the sooner we can start school, whatever that looks like, let's start full blast, ready to go into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Knowing that the teachers are going to circle back and fill those gaps in, I think we'll be just fine. So if that helps in conversation in the community, that the teachers know what they're doing, we're prepared for that and we'll be ready for them to come back. There are many, many cases, um, where teachers will have, um, let's say it's Computer Science one. They'll just, they'll just wrap that, well, they didn't get Computer Science one in the Computer Science two, those students that are taking that course. So the teachers, the teachers are ready.
It might be Computer Science five by the time they get through this spring.
True.
I, I, I would say that, that, um, having a kid in middle school and in elementary school, the middle school is a little bit harder than the elementary school just because the, the math starts to get advanced, right? You start adding new, um, some new theories and new approaches and things like that. Um, versus elementary was pretty easy, it was harder to keep engaged in elementary just because it was a lot of the same stuff. But, uh, I know a number of, of parents that we logged on and actually did video chats with the kids before the teachers kind of got into the swing of doing that multiple times per week. Um, we were doing that with a number of the kids just to walk them through, like, how to solve the math problems and a couple of different approaches. Um, so I think you had a number of parents that stepped up to help where they could. So I think you had a number of parents that stepped up to help where they could. If you didn't have that, I would imagine, I mean, once you get into pre-calc and calc, your percentages decrease.
Yeah. And, and I, that's, that's very fair. I'm, I don't mean to say we didn't have parents step up because I know they were. We also had a lot of teachers create videos and talk about calc. I mean, you can't learn that. I'm not teaching my son calc because I promise you that. So he had to, he had to watch most of your kids' videos and so on. So you know, I really, I told the high school staff this from the beginning that I think we will be better educators coming out of this because we've been forced to use a skill set we had before. I think, to be just really honest, the, the fact that teachers were forced to call parents and break that barrier, it's not scary anymore. Because I've talked to parents all right, they've talked to parents. And in a teacher role, you're, it's a concern. I, I have yet to find a teacher that doesn't say, when I first started calling parents, I was always nerve wracking because you never know what you're going to get. It's like presenting to the board, right? It's a little nerve wracking because you're not sure what you're going to get back. But I think we're going to be better. I think we'll be more flexible. I think we can, and I told Tim this, and I think our district will do it better than anybody else. And that's just what I think. Because I've seen.
Now, I, I, I think another feedback that you may see is a greater appreciation of the teachers from the parents. Because now they know what the teachers have to do to educate their children. And it's not as easy as they thought.
It's not. And it's not easy being at school without kids. It's just the life is just, it's like, what happened, right? I was talking to Trish Pryor, that as an artist, things not connecting with kids, just not having that goofy time at lunch, or seeing a guy finish a project or whatever.
Well, I'll tell you, as a parent with two seniors and a sophomore and a fourth grader, all on Chromebooks, all doing that distance learning thing. Every single one of them, more so than our second grader, but the rest of them, the other four, absolutely just completely missed that interaction with teachers and with other students. It just wasn't school. We saw that most, I think, from the elementary, our elementary schooler, of just they need that social interaction. They need that. I mean, it's not even the schoolwork. He didn't mind the schoolwork, but normally working on schoolwork with friends or with a teacher, they all really missed that aspect of it.
That social is so important. You asked about diplomas. So we made the choice to have, to partner with K L. Give students the opportunity to come in on a Wednesday, they scheduled the time, I don't remember the date exactly. And it was after our scholarship, whose video was done. And so we had scholarship and the diplomas in specific envelopes for kids. So when they would sign up to come to K L, to this auditorium and take a picture with K L, they would receive that. That's not the way I wanted to do it. None of this is the way I wanted to do it. I was filming actually for graduation. Tim was there in the auditorium. And I, I just commented to Tim that this graduation, prior to the ceremony in the auditorium is unbelievable. It's just, that's my favorite night of the year because the kid is just electric in there. Well, we missed that. I mean, nobody wants it to be like this. So they got through diplomas that night. And so they all have them in hand. To answer your question. We are done with this, we are done with the graduation video. It looks great. There's some neat things in there that I'm not going to share because I want it to be a surprise, but there's something that's really, it's really neat.
Yeah. Now, as, as much as when you called me, considering the virtual ad, and it was an early decision there, I, I, as much as I wanted to have the in-person graduation ceremony, I know if we were going to do a virtual, it was going to take time to do it right. And I wanted to maximize that time we could.
Yeah, I appreciate.
And those, and those school districts that have been contemplating or flipping between in-person and virtual. I know Hudson just went to a virtual. A lot of them are, are changing from the in-person to virtual, so.
Oh, it's repetitive in-person?
Some of the, some of the districts in the area are still going to hold an in-person of some form, but I think, which the large, large majority of them are, are going with virtual ceremonies, so.
Well, when I talk to my colleagues around the area, the, the virtual ceremony isn't, I mean, it's not what people might envision. It's you walk across and you walk up the other side. It's not that, it's not that auditorium, everybody together feel. It just isn't. And I feel bad. I have a senior son. I feel bad about it personally. And I feel bad about it for the kids and everybody else, but we're, we're in a classic no win situation. I mean, not just us, but parents, everybody. We're all in the same messy ball, so. But we'll continue to serve kids the best we can and do the best we can by them, and that's, that's all we can do.
I appreciate your hard work, Kurt.
Thanks, Art.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Art.
I'm making tough decisions.
Are there any other questions, Kurt, or any of the other?
I'll just say thank you for being prepared for the presentation. I appreciate the work and the analytics you put behind that.
Thanks.
So I would just, you know, it's nice to see the data.
Appreciate it. Thanks, man.
Because you understand the data.
Well, it makes it quantifiable, right? I mean, you can actually put feels better.
When I was looking for somebody to look at my stuff, I should have said it to you.
I don't miss those days of the, you know this. Okay, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our student, staff, and community recognition. Ryan?
All right. Yeah, first one is boys basketball team. The recognition, congratulations to the boys basketball team on their team academic all-state recognition. We are proud to be a representation of S E C as student athletes. Second, Jeremiah Hubbard. Congratulations on the achievement of the rank of Eagle Scout. Next is Devon Wosley. Congratulations Devon Wosley on his academic all-state regional recognition in wrestling. We are proud of your representation of S E C as student athletes, as a student athlete. Amanda Arnold, thank you. Thank you for your outstanding work in creating a combined video of individual S E C choir students singing the national anthem and granted for a twenty twenty virtual graduation ceremony. Your willingness to go above and beyond is noticed and appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all those that receive recognition and thank you to those that submitted those recognitions, so. If we have others that need to be recognized, please add that to the Google list, so. Thank you for that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion of future needs and priorities of the district. I think, based on what I've heard on the previous meeting, as your request, Scott, was to gather some more housing data to get to our person for the better understanding of the, the population study. What's the status of that?
So yeah, Hazel is working on that. What she's doing exactly, I, I don't know for sure. And then she asked us, Pam's getting her the, the, you know, in seats enrollment data versus the, you know, you said, well, this is kind of, doesn't tell us what we need for facilities. We, we need to look at the data for in seats, so you did send that to me.
I did tonight. Would the data like Brian mentioned with the athletics and the, the, that, you know, the, the data of the community use of our buildings? Is that, that's something I think we should take into consideration, I think? Because as our community grows, those use of those buildings outside of that school day, do you think that has a, I mean, I don't know, just a thought?
Yeah, I mean, someone's quantifiable with who signed up, but it doesn't tell you who wanted to sign up but couldn't, I guess. That could come out of ad hoc.
Yeah, I don't know that non-school use is going to drive referendum money to build, we're not building a gym because more people would have used it at, at night. I don't think this, I don't think that's the direction that, that the board, at least in my opinion. That's not the use of resources that I would recommend. If they're there, yes, they should use them more, but I don't think people are going to want to spend six million dollars on a, on a gym because more people would use it at, more non-students would use it at night.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to cover? I'll figure out to that. This is going to be pretty much a standing agenda item until we get the, the details worked out of what we're looking at and how we're going to proceed, so.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the strategic planning thing, learn more, obviously Joe Donovan's thing tied to that. But admin team is doing our annual admin retreat where we look back at last year, how did we do? How do we look forward? Some development exercises and then look forward as to what our focus will, will be for the following year. So we'll obviously have that input to help and be part of strategic planning as well. You know, we're going to discuss whether the top ten goal is still relevant and, you know, the other three big pillars, et cetera. But we'll, we'll have a recommendation coming out of that this week.
Okay. Is there anything else from any of the other board members regards to that? Then we'll move on to the next item, which is consideration of our W I A A twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one high school membership renewal. We've received a contract here for senior high membership renewal. It consists of nine sports for the boys, eight for the girls. No membership dues, which have been suspended as of the twenty seventeen eighteen school year. But there is a support assessment fee of seven hundred fifty dollars and non-contact co-op fee of a hundred dollars for a total of eight hundred fifty dollars payable to W I A A for the renewal. So I guess I would entertain a motion.
Move approval. Start again.
The motion, Scott second, David to approve the renewal of the W I A A membership renewal. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next is the consideration of approval of the revisions of the S E C employee handbook. We received this about a month ago. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look it over. Any questions or concerns with regards to that? I think the thing that I raised is there were a couple of links. One, I believe, had to do with the Fair Labor Practices Act. There is a link to the federal government that probably no longer is active. So if we can get that corrected in there. And I don't know if it was my computer or what, but the, the link, I think on, that was two point oh six. It's another section that I had trouble opening. I don't know if it was the I nine form or. I had trouble with that link also.
Please wait. If this message is not eventually replaced by proper contents, your PDF reader may not be able to display this type of document.
So I guess if we could get those corrected, I would entertain a motion to approve the handbook as it exists.
Make a motion to approve. Handbook.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion with regards to that?
Basically just some housekeeping and links is all it is, making sure that they're accurate.
Correct.
Yeah, the one I could open my work computer, but I couldn't get the PDF reader to work on my Chromebook.
Maybe we just need to update.
And I tried it on Windows ten and it wouldn't open, so. Wanted Adobe Reader.
I had noticed, because I'm teaching online, there is a lot of issues with Chrome all of a sudden not having some things updated and not linking some things for my students. I've had to request use of different browsers.
Really? Our global IT department has pushed us all to Chrome because of the stability?
I, I told.
It's your fault.
And that's what I suggested to all my students was Chrome. And then I started this new course and they're having issues and.
Well, it's still a PC, so.
Yeah, it was suggested go to Firefox and.
We dropped an explorer because it's not working at work, so. Yes.
Still technology.
Netscape.
Yeah. You're dating yourself, David. Okay. A motion, second to approve it, if. I guess all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is consideration of approval of adding liquidated damages for script curricular assignments.
Yeah, I don't know how to join it up. I can't turn it off. So it'd be nice to display, so. We have to hook it up to yours. So Chance, Ryan?
Okay. You want to run it?
Well, I just need why is there only one person? Your grid view.
My grid view got disabled.
Well, as long as you can hear, so that Brian, when Brian chants and whoever else talks, they can hear.
Okay, I've enabled the grid, grid view, but I don't know what's.
I'll start. So after the last meeting, said we'd put it in writing, so it worked with Pam. Pam said, well, let's just put it in the same format and mirror language that's in the teacher liquidated damages. So this mirrors the teacher liquidated damages, language, format, and, and everything minus the little bit of spin, you know, that I've, or the draft that we came up with. So, you know, A two specifically talks about fifteen percent and and the thirty days. So Pam, it should say thirty days actually, right?
It's got that.
One oh two, A one should say thirty days. I'm not sure how that happened because we had it in there. And then the rest is mirroring language, you know, illness of employee was one of the reasons they listed military service. But other reasons is determined by the board would be the extenuating circumstances, obviously. So that is the policy, sample policy presented for your consideration. We would make that thirty days, not sixty. It's supposed to be thirty.
I guess I'm still of the opinion that especially after talking to Chance and then getting that letter from Jason, it just seems unnecessary.
After talking to Chance?
Well, yeah, Chance had said like, oh, it's very, it's rare, one, maybe two. And then Jason's letter was the same. I don't know. I mean, if it's a policy you, you really want, I mean, I don't think it's going to come into play a lot, at least it doesn't seem that way historically, based on their opinions.
Yeah, I, we have the data regarding teacher liquidated damages. We had eleven resignations so far this current year, one of which we've imposed liquidated damages. So happens to nine percent of the time. Last year, twelve, of which one imposed liquidated damages. And the year before, five teacher, these are on all. Teacher, teacher resignations, not staff.
But I think that's different. Like they might get a job somewhere else type thing and, or, you know what I mean? I, I don't know.
I don't think it's any different to our students.
No.
Our students don't care where they're going, but if they cut short before, I mean, our students aren't going to care if they're going to another state or.
It's not to prevent that. It's not to prevent that.
I'm not saying it's going to prevent it, but I think it may make somebody think twice about the effect, I guess, on, on the district.
I think that the people who do this is a glorified volunteer position, and they always think about those students. And they're not going to quit something on a short notice like that unless they really have to.
That's, the data doesn't back that up.
But Chance said there were two and Jason said there were one. That seems.
Chance has the data.
That seemed, at least, because that's what they said. It just seemed.
Well, I guess if Chance is, is there, can he?
And like I said, I, I'll hold for it, but it just seemed unnecessary based on what they had told us.
Okay, can you guys?
Yep, we can hear it. Yep, we can hear it.
Can you hear me, Howard?
Yeah, go ahead.
But my video's not working, right? I mean, I answered the data in front of me, but I can just read it.
Yep.
Alright, yeah, so I went back and looked, you know, after our last meeting and, you know, even Brian's question about, you know, how are you going to measure this, what's, what's the goal or how are you going to know if it's working or not? So yeah, so I went and of course the amazing Pam Katner had a spreadsheet already with all the data, of course she does. So I just went through the last three years, just in the extracurricular athletics and activities. In twenty seventeen, there was twenty seven resignations, three of which happened within thirty days of it starting. Twenty eighteen nineteen, there was thirty seven resignations, two of which were, were within that thirty day window. Uh, and then last year, there was thirty nine resignations and five of those were within that thirty day window. So over the last three years, that's a hundred and, hundred and three, I think, ten of which were within the thirty day window. Now, all ten of those aren't, I, all ten of those, I don't think in my opinion would on, um, the liquidated damages route, cause there was definitely some extenuating circumstances within those ten. That I know off the top of my head, um, but it was a mix, there was, um, I think two or three at the elementary, uh, three or four at the middle school and then a couple at the high school. So it was kind of a mixed cross of the board.
I guess it begs a different question in my mind, and that is how are we going to encourage more people to, to take on these roles, since it's so hard for them to find them, I mean.
So you think it's prohibitive if I'm not going to sign up for this because I don't think I can resign within thirty days or more?
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying on a different topic, this is, this is language in a contract and that doesn't bother me. I'm saying besides this, the big mention was you, they're having trouble finding people in general, don't you? I mean, that's a bigger issue, isn't it? How are we going to get?
Yeah, well, Trisha, Trisha's point is, is valid and I, I'm not sure what.
Separate from this.
If you figure that out, Trisha, I'm not, because that's, that's, it's been a, I don't know if it's a current trend or, you know, lately it's a trend where, I don't know, people are busier and busier and. I don't know, life is, life is swirling for everybody. But yeah, back to your point about, there's certainly, the, the whole reason this was even brought up is zero to do with hoping people don't resign. It's the same amount of work for Jason or Brian or Pam or me or administrators. If somebody resigns three days, thirty days or three hundred days before the season begins, it's the same amount of work on us. The impact though is on the kids if it's three days, those are the ones that are going to be impacted negatively, the shorter that time period, that time period is.
We chose thirty days, cause typically two, two, two weeks, you know, to post it, two weeks to hire, you know, and then we're right up against it. So like, I think most jobs, not all were asked or required, at least two weeks notice, you know, for the same reason. I mean, it's just, it, it, it's only a bad thing if somebody does a bad thing, right? You know, um, and it, there's lots of extenuating circumstances that aren't bad.
Well, I guess that's what, that's what I'm looking at with this, I guess, is the extenuating circumstances opens it up for us to say, yes, this is an exception. You know, this, when you look at, uh, if you boil it right down to, I guess, a teacher teaching students and a coach coaching students, they're both doing basically the same thing. Granted, they're very different, but they're, they're teaching those kids something, whether it's a sport or whether it's respect or whether it's academics, whatever it is. I don't understand why, and this is just me personally, I don't understand why this is such a, it seems like it's a big deal to have this be the same along the lines of. The teaching side of things, because they're doing basically the same job, they're, they're teaching those kids something. We're still allowing for extenuating circumstances, so you know, Chance, I think you said there was ten in there and you know for sure that, you know, in those, in those three years of data. For sure, there was some extenuating circumstance in there, so it's not like we're throwing the policy will and illia at people and just saying, no, we don't care. So to me, I don't understand, I guess, what, I don't understand what appears to be the fear of having this in there if we're not concerned about people. Abusing it or, yeah, I, I don't know, I, I don't understand why this seems to be a sticking point.
Now, part of my, part of my issue with, with is why I'm waffling on this is, you know, are we going to force a coach that doesn't want to coach into a position that he doesn't want to do? And therefore, then the kids suffer because he's not going to do a very good job because his heart's not into it.
We don't want that, like you think somebody would keep coaching rather than pay liquidated damages?
That's what I would be afraid of.
I think it's more, people see it as a, a message and I, when you, when I listen to John Tackman, and I, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think. When these policies come in and you've been a coach for a long time, you think, wow, really? You think I'm going to do that to you, that's what you think and we, do you know what I mean, like, it's, it's a lowest common denominator policy and, and as much as it's, it's not directed at them, they feel it is, do you know what I mean?
That's the thing, is this policy is bigger than one person, this policy is policy across the board, across future employees, current employees, whatever, this is not directed at any one individual.
But.
That's obvious.
You know, the, going to the lowest common denominator, one of my fears there is that if we accept behavior like this. Resignation, then that, that boils down to the whole staff and then that's when things go down to the least common denominator of, if you can get away with it, why can't I?
It's the reason we have any rules or policies or laws, it's meant to encourage positive behavior and discourage negative behavior. If we don't, we just continue again with those people that have just decided, I don't want to coach the day before, cause I don't feel like it. I mean, I'm sorry, only doesn't help kids, I mean, it's like, so if we don't have some sort of, you know, deterrent, it's like, oops, my bad, and then the next time.
Oh, yeah.
Oops, my bad, it's like speed limits, why, why do we have any laws? It's, it's meant to encourage positive behavior and discourage negative behavior. If we didn't have speed limits, we probably would have more people speeding. You know, and it's, it's only a bad thing if you speed, it's, it's not like this is applied uniformly to everybody and it's negative. It's again, only a bad thing if person chooses to not be respectful and communicate thirty days. That's, it's, it is rare, you're right, that's a, a great point. It's rare, it's, it's, it's more common than the, the teacher liquidated damages, we had three out of twenty seven in the last three years. Two of which the board approved for extending circumstances and hit, no problem, you let us know seven months in advance, you want to retire mid-year, waived, done. But if somebody says, uh, I took another job or whatever in August, I mean, it's, there's a reason for that, it's now we're onto candidate pool B, C or D.
I see Brian Johnson's online, uh, Brian, would you like to comment on this?
Uh, sure, Howard, um, you know, when, when we talked about this policy, I broke the policy down, uh, in my head, as I, as I was thinking about it into its parts. I think that we said and, and asked people, is it fair and reasonable to give us thirty days notice that you don't want to continue doing something? I think we'd all say that's reasonable. And I think if we said, we're going to leave it up to admin and the board to determine if, um, there's an extenuating circumstance. I also think that's pretty reasonable. And then it comes down to the fifteen percent. And as we looked at the value of that fifteen percent, that seemed pretty reasonable. So those, those three pieces altogether, I think made a pretty reasonable policy, uh, as an impetus or a motivation to, to give us some timely communication.
Okay.
Does, does Howard?
Would that, I guess, would that at this point? Working on that communication, is it necessary to set this policy now or can it be done at a later date? And allow the directors to have chance to communicate this to the coaches as a possibility?
Well, Howard, the good news is we purposely, um, we, we went round and round on sixty days, thirty days, you know, and with just the current situation of what we're living in right now. We intentionally, we intentionally said, let's not put a start date on this because honestly, Pam is still working on contracts for next year anyway. So this won't even exist, no, nobody has signed a contract yet anyway, so it's not like people are going to have this hanging over their head and now, or I got to make a decision with everything else going on in the world at the same time as a liquidated damages thought in the back of my mind. And then the second thing quickly, you know, it is very rare, and I'll tell you, I always want to want record, ninety nine percent of the, the people of SCC are doing exactly what you guys are saying. They know that it's going to take work to replace them, um, and they're reaching out well in advance of thirty days. I mean, a lot of them at the end of the season, hey, Chance, I just want to give you a heads up next year, this is happening in my life, um, I just want to be fair to you. And I could go back to the thirty seven resignations last year and I bet you thirty five or thirty six of those people sent a very nice email to Pam or Jason or me and said, hey, I just want to give you as much notice as possible. So it is very rare, um, but it does happen and that's the whole reason why we're even having this discussion.
Okay.
I guess I would go back to the same thing that I asked the last meeting, though it isn't, it isn't about putting it in, like I understand fair and reasonable on the contract and everything, it's just, if this is a problem we're concerned about. Will it solve it, yes or no? Like, I mean, do, like, do we have confidence that this will solve it, right? So we've had ten, does success look like it's seven or does success look like it's six or like, you know, like, does that look like? Or, or do we have to do more than this if it's that big of a problem? Because it is more of my question, like, how do you, like, how do you know you're, this fixes it or are we confident that that would reduce it appropriately?
Well, it won't, if the teacher liquidated damages is any indication, you know, it doesn't stop it. It doesn't, I, what I don't know is what, how many it prevents.
Yeah, it's tough to know what the reduction is without doing some kind of exit interview to say, if we didn't have this policy, would you have been gone earlier, would you have waited longer? And you, I, I don't, I don't know that there's any reasonable way for us to get to that data.
How many accidents are prevented by imposing stricter speed limit signs and law, I don't, I don't know how to answer that.
I guess, another off the wall question that I, I will throw out there is if we've had ten, uh, resignations that fit this, uh, situation. How, how many people does that ten involve? Is it ten different people or are we looking at one person that is responsible for multiple resignations over the years? Or how many situations are we in that?
Well, I can, I can speak to the last three years, of those ten, it's eight different people.
Okay.
So there were some repeat in terms of certain activities, but for the most part. Try and we're different people.
But Chance, you had said there has definitely been some extenuating circumstances in the administration board, whoever has said, yes, there's extenuating circumstances here, we're all good, don't worry about it, we're not going to hammer on you.
Without a doubt, and I mean, I, 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 one specific example, I won't say what this activity was, cause it would be pretty obvious what it was. But she came to Pete and I and said, just kind of laid it all out there and said, this is not what's happening, this is how it's impacting the other parts of my job. And, um, can you guys help? And we did, we went to work and we, we talked to people that we figured, um, could, could fill in for her and it worked out great. And she, she was in a better place, um, the person that came on board did an amazing job and I, I, without question, you guys would have said, oh, that's an extenuating circumstances. But I got to tack it on a fifteen percent penalty to her as well. And I would guess, looking at this list, um, the ones that I, I know of, I would say probably half you guys would have done that and the other half, probably not.
So I'm opposed for a number of reasons. First off, I come from small business, I hate rules. More rules, more rules, more rules, I'm, I'm just.
That's not. That hasn't worked for me in the past. I like adult culture and we need to cultivate better communication, give, um, have a calendar of when those dates start. Maybe the biggest issue that I have is privacy issues. Maybe it's none of our business, what mental health issue or physical health issue or whatever the person has. And we shouldn't make them come in front of us and say, this happened to me or this is my situation. So I think we're strongly reacting to something that doesn't need a strong reaction.
Okay.
And I would say, if it were me, I wouldn't, I'm a very private person and lots of things like that, and so I think that's a very good point, Scott.
I look at it, I guess, that I would not ask for details, I guess I would approach it differently, you know, for me, I just, I, I look at this as being consistent. You know, like you say, when I look at teachers versus coaches doing the same thing, whether the teacher is teaching algebra or math or language, social studies, art. Or they're teaching basketball, they're teaching track and field, they're teaching cheerleading, they're teaching something. And this is in place for the teachers and coaches are teaching something, I see this as just being consistent, I, I just don't see what the problem is here, but that's just my.
I think too, you, you look at three thousand dollar contract, that's four hundred and fifty dollars, it's quite a bit more than if you compare it to the one thousand dollar teacher leave amount.
As a percent, you mean?
Percentage wise, yeah. I don't know, I feel like we're, we're still a small district and we just keep getting bigger with our policies. Is that a good thing? I, I don't know.
Okay.
How do we determine which policies and rules we should have, shouldn't have?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's where I tend to lean more to the side of consistency across the board, you know, we're trying to get all of our staff to a hundred and ten percent. All of our staff with certain benefits, all of our staff treated the same as other staff, this is simply treating coaches the same as we treat teachers. I don't buy the percentage, I guess, because you're looking at just the contract amount, when you look at the total package, the percentage is way off on what they'd have to give up. On top of that, I think the district has shown, whether it's the board or whether it's administration, that we understand there are extenuating circumstances. And I don't think we're going to ask somebody to delve through their medical files to prove to us that we want to know exactly what's going on. I mean, there are some privacy issues there as well, we, obviously we can't break any kind of HIPAA laws, that kind of stuff, we wouldn't ask someone to do that kind of thing. I just don't see that we have shown in the past that we're abusive with the policy on the teacher side and I don't know why there would be any expectation differently on the coaching side. And to me, this is just being consistent.
One difference that I see between the two is when we post a teacher job and get thirty five applications and we post a coaching job and have to go beg somebody to do it. There's a significant difference in that and I, I just don't see adding any even perceived obstacles to extracurricular contracts being beneficial to the district.
I guess, I wouldn't want to make exceptions on the coaching side, the same as we don't make exceptions on the teaching side. It, it might make it more difficult, but you might weed out the person who thinks, yeah, you know what, I don't know if I'm that committed, maybe I don't want to apply. Good, maybe we didn't want them in there if they're not that committed, I, I don't know. Maybe they'd be great, I don't know, but we were, again, we're talking hypotheticals, I'm just looking at it as consistency.
I guess the question that I would have is, is this something the athletic council, activities council could handle on their own? With the caveat as if they don't deal with it, then the administration and board will. Is, is that a possibility? Any response Chance or Brian?
Um, off the top of my head, I, I, I'll, I'll go to work on anything, but we're talking sixty two people again, Howard, and there's, there's, there's a wide range. Of, of things that fall under this umbrella, um.
And after last meeting, you asked me to email and I emailed all staff, you know, and you heard from two, one current coach out of the sixty two, I don't know if, you know. I think no response is a response.
As what?
I mean, uh, you know, one, one coach applied and. I mean, uh, you know, one one coach applied repeatedly asked why. Which I think we've provided the answers to multiple times now, um.
And Tim, sorry, it wasn't written, but um two different middle school coaches, just in passing, asking about your email and said, am I supposed to reply to that? I said, only if you have thoughts on it, and they all separately said, I actually thought that was something that already was in place, I I just, they thought it was standard contract. Um equity or equity that that would already been in there, so those were the two, that wasn't written or formal feedback, but just the two comments that I had made to me since our last meeting.
I I mean, yeah, I mean, we we presented facts and data and Ben Shapiro, I'm a big fan of, he he says, facts don't have feelings, you know. We presented the facts, you know, one of the arguments is asked five different people, five different districts and they chuckled at it. I I don't know, that's irrelevant. That's not a fact, I mean, I I don't get that, I also wanna clear up his email, it said, Mr. Whitaker has proposed cutting all spring activities pay. That is not a fact, that's a mistruth, I was in a wage and benefit committee, I was asked to present facts, I presented the numbers, how much. Um, spring coaches pay is and one third had already been paid and if the other two thirds were to be held, what that number was. So I never proposed cutting it, number one, everybody had received a third of their pay already, I never was asked for recommendation and I never gave it. I certainly didn't propose cutting it, I gave data on which schools were paying, which weren't and which ones were paying partially and I gave the numbers as to what. That number would be if we didn't pay. I never was asked for my recommendation, the group said, let's pay them all, if I was asked for my recommendation, it would have been to survey the sixty two. Uh people or the spring coaches pay on uh coaches only, I would have asked them, would have been my next step, but I never was, so. I wanna clear that up, that's uh that's not just, that's not putting words in my mouth, that's misrepresentation of 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 the truth.
Well, just for the record, my opposition isn't based on either of the letters written by coaches or or administrator or whatever, mine is based on. When in doubt, don't add policy. That's my, that's that's, to me, the beauty of a small district is it's a small district and if a couple of people.